I don't know if that's a quid or just a fact.
Yeah.
We can put it in the rest of the Democratic.
But you're not looking at personal property.
Right.
Yeah, so he doesn't know. He's like, I don't know.
Question my mic.
He has personal properties in there because he wouldn't have.
Yeah, already.
If he bought it.
Yeah, he needs public access.
Okay.
What's that?
Yep.
Sorry. Good evening, welcome to the January 19, 2016 regular meeting of the Town Council. Tony Martino, will you do the, lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello? Counselor Bella?
Here.
Counselor Hemmle?
Here.
Hemen, excuse me. Counselor Hurley?
Here.
Counselor Martino is going to be late. Counselor Ralph?
Here.
I'm sorry, Counselor Martino?
Here.
Counselor Ralph?
Here.
Counselor Spinella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Berry?
Here.
And Mayor Martini will not be attending.
There are no public hearings, so we'll go to A2 Public Comments. Do we have any comments from public?
Which one do I use? Both of them maybe?
One's a line.
This one right here.
That's the microphone.
Yes, yeah.
This is a line.
Oh, okay, all right. Good evening, Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. Couple things tonight. First of all, thank you for addressing the problem or the question that I had regarding that little sign that was not able, you know, we were not able to read it, but you replaced it and I was amazed because I complained that on Monday and by Wednesday or Thursday it was already done. So there was good, there is still hope for the town, I guess, you know. On a different note though, I came across the magazine, Connecticut Magazine, and basically last year, it was in November 2015, they rated the towns, all the towns in Connecticut. And right away I said, wow, I gotta see where we stand. And they rated like, you know, and they clustered between, you know, the median home values. And in Weathersfield, I guess, we fall into the category of 200,000 and 250,000. That's the median home value. And the cost between 200 and 250,000, there are about 46 towns in Connecticut. Out of 46, they have basically categorized them into culture/leisure, economy, crime, community engagement, and education. Wow, that's pretty good, interesting. This is kind of fun reading. And I says, okay, where does Weathersfield stand? Weathersfield, the median, I guess, home value is $238,000. And what bothered me the most, that it's under education, it came to number 39 out of 46. Now, before I continue on, the chart that I'm reading below shows the 46 towns with a median home value between 200 and 250,000. The best possible rating in each category is 1, and the worst is 46. Okay, so Weathersfield comes in education, because that's what I care about. It comes of 39 out of 46. It doesn't even make the 50%, the top 50%. Guess what? Rocky Hill is above us, 36 out of 46. And even Newington comes at 29 over 46. What are we doing wrong with this town? We spent $14,000 for each student. And every year that I come right here, we always hear about, we need to spend more money, education is number one, education is number one. This does not show that education is number one. 82% of the budget, the Board of Education budget goes to salaries and benefits. Only 18% goes to the students. But obviously this shows it, okay? I was also interested, where does Glastonbury falls? First of all, Glastonbury, I guess the houses are worth a little bit more, between 250 and 325,000. And guess what? And there are 38 towns between those costs, the prices of the house. Glastonbury comes the second, 2 out of 38. What is Glastonbury doing better than we are? It's just next door. Why are they so high? Don't you ever ask yourself why? Is this the way to run a town? Are the teachers and everybody that is basically running the Board of Education, are they accountable for what they're doing? Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, Robert Young, 20 Copperville Road. I'm sure we've all read the articles in the paper this week and last several weeks about General Electric moving on, planning to move on out of Connecticut, as well as we've heard other companies, major companies are talking, had been talking about it, and I'm sure they still are. You know, these articles that we see in the paper, Behind the Curve on GE, Malloy Sober on GE's loss, this hurts. You bet it's gonna hurt. It's gonna hurt the whole state. And another one, keep firms in the state. They're talking about trying to keep firms in the state. And the topic, and that's the topic for the next session. And of course, the sniping continues going on. And of course, we have involved our federal and our state representatives working on this. And look at the disaster we have. I think I could talk all night about the articles on General Electric and the disgrace our leaders up at the State Capitol have put out to lose an iconic company like General Electric. But then, on the other hand, on the same page of the Hartford Current, right below it, Long Road Back, have you read that article yet? That's another honey. Young couple that bought a house only a few years ago, now sells it, tries to sell it. They put it on the market for 384, ends up selling for 317. That's a tremendous loss, as well as they had to kick in $10,000 to the seller on closing costs, which brought it down to 309. I wouldn't want to take that kind of loss. They're lucky though, their parents were able to, or family members were able to help bail them out. But I don't think that's the way it should be. And it's too bad that they lost all that money. I had a message right after this hit, I sent this out to a lot of people that I know. And a friend came back and said he had moved from his hometown and went to another town here in Connecticut, and then decided after seven years to sell his house. Of course, he bought his house, had it built for $385,000. Year ago, he sold it for 360. And then, same trick with the buyer. They wanted $10,000 to help them with their closing costs and he negotiated it down to four grand. But still, he lost a third of what he paid for his house. And that's what's going on all around Connecticut, and we have nothing, I don't know who we can thank except for the people that are chief executors up at the State Capitol. And of course, those are the same people that you people rely on for cash to help fund the town of Weathersfield. And you support them, which is terrible. You should be hammering those people up there. I don't know why you're not. And then look at Hartford with the stadium that they pushed through overnight, very short time. They didn't spend, they didn't do their due diligence, now they're over budget too. And then they had to deal in stadium business, another Hartford problem. And, but who cares in Hartford? They're just gonna turn to the governor at that time, whoever it is, and say, we need more money. And us state taxpayers will pay for those errors made. And I get pretty angry over how we are taken. We shouldn't put, the state taxpayers shouldn't put a nickel in to the city of Hartford. But we constantly do, and I don't care what governor it is. Why should I put money in the pot when I can't vote for those people? If I could go vote for those people, I might go along with putting it in the pot. But that's how it is. And then we have these goat yard stadiums. Then of course, there's an article in the paper regarding, it was actually, it was a letter to the editor regarding State for the Birds. I think it was a Weathersfield man who wrote it, talking about the songbirds who go north, the snowbirds that go south, and they're leaving. They don't care. Pack up and get the heck out. The state is in horrible shape, it's being run by a bunch of people that don't know what they're doing. We can go look at the General Electric issue. Then of course, we have dual pensions, which now a Superior Court judge says that there's no more double dipping. Why did it take so long? Nobody should be double dipping. If you retired, you're retired. But if you go back to work in the same community or with the same pension plan somewhere in whatever town it is, you shouldn't be double dipping. And then of course, we have the Harvard again, with their raises that they got. Look at Adam Cloud picks up a $20,000 raise. This is the way these people are. And we don't want to see that happening in this town, but we're suffering because of all of that. We're getting the pains from what Hartford does wrong, and nobody here talks about it. You people should be in the newspaper criticizing them. But wasn't long ago, our own mayor was standing behind Pedro up there on City Hall, supporting him. Didn't I see a picture floating around around the election? Him and Malloy, standing next to each other. But he'll never criticize, our mayor will never criticize any of these people. They're all too ingrained in their friends and buddies. I wish he was here tonight to hear me say it. I'm sure he'll pick it up on the telephone, on the television. And then of course, we have the state president pro tem, Martin Looney, a New Haven senator who will not vote on tolls until after the election. What a game plan these people play. I mean, what do they take us for? I know they got the feedbag on all of us for the money that they need, but why be so blatant? We know what his game plan is. And then tonight, we heard about the musicians.
Mr. Young, you almost finished?
Yes, sir, I'll wrap it up. And then we heard about the musicians tonight.
You'll get a chance at the end as well.
Where they took a 36% cut in pay. The musicians, not the top people. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Tom Mazarella, 600 Wocket Hill Road. Just like to make a couple comments about the upcoming budget process. I think everybody should have realized or has realized that the state's in a lot of trouble. It's only gonna get worse. There was some projection, Mr. Young showed us that showed a $2 billion deficit in the year 2020. So where are they gonna get the extra money? Well, for starters, they're gonna reduce their contribution to the towns. Nobody knows how much, but it's inevitable that we're gonna start losing some of the free ride that we've been getting. So where's the town gonna get the shortfall? Well, typically, they come up with a budget and divide it by the number of taxpayers and there you go. Just get the money from the average taxpayer. Well, you have to look around. Everything's not as rosy as it might seem. I think most of the people in this room probably earn a good living, and they're not having trouble making ends meet, but I don't think that's the case across the board. We had this huge recession in 2008, 2009. Lot of people lost their jobs. That continued over a number of years. It was almost like companies said, well, this is easy, we can, now we have a good excuse, we can just start laying people off left and right. And it continues. I just talked to someone the other day, they worked for one of the insurance companies, 37 years, out the door, no severance, no nothing, just your job's been eliminated. Then these people that are out of work tried getting back into the workforce, and it took a couple years, and a lot of them did find jobs. But they weren't the paying, the high paying jobs that they were used to. They were substantially less in some cases. So I think you need to think of some of these people when you're working on your budget. I think there's a lot of people that go paycheck to paycheck, and it's not visible. They're kinda like, you know, like the homeless people that you read about. I don't go in the, by the underpasses of bridges to see who's sleeping outside on tonight when it's 20 degrees out. But they exist. And I'm not trying to say that that's, you know, the norm in Weathersfield, but there are people that are hurting. And they don't advertise it, and they have pride, they don't wanna, you know, go out there and, you know, go to the food bank or whatever, they just try to get by. So you can't keep hitting them with big tax increases. The other thing I want to bring up is, if you're gonna try and reduce the spending, if I can convince you to reduce the spending, or at least take a stab at it, you have to get all the departments on board. History is that, once you have a budget, you know, you spend the budget. If you don't spend the money that was allocated to you, you're not gonna get it next year. That happens in town governments, state, federal governments, happens in the military, you know, there's just, it's a routine, and you have to get away from that. Here we had the Board of Ed, they had almost a million dollar surplus, they went out and spent it. You know, yeah, they bought some computers, they probably needed them, but, you know, they could've thrown that money back into the next year's kitty. Tonight before you, you have an agenda item for the police department, they need to get another vehicle, replace a vehicle. Well, I don't know a lot about police work, police surveillance. Seems to me, if they have a number of vehicles, I don't see any reason why they need to get a vehicle that holds four police officers for surveillance. If you have to have four individuals for that specific task, why not take two of the vehicles that you already have? I read the agenda item and I kinda thought it was funny. I mean, if a brand new Ford pickup truck was parked in front of my house with four guys in it, sitting there, I think I might call the police and ask them to do a drive by and see what these guys are doing. Doesn't seem like, seems like you're bringing attention to yourselves. Get some old rent a wreck, drive around in those, save a few bucks. I understand it's asset forfeiture money, that's not free money, you know? Throw that money back into the till, reduce some other spending. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to council reports.
I attended the Housing Authority meeting on the 11th of January. They had a public hearing in regards to rent increase for their tenants. Tenants did come and speak up. They have two solar projects that were approved through Eversource, and they'll be starting those projects. One will be on the Fuller Housing Building, and the other is on the kind of administration area. So they're looking forward to having that help them. And Jeff, I asked that they reach out to you, they had some questions in regards to pilot. And so I asked that Mr. Kelly and Kate reach out to you.
I met with them last week.
Okay, great.
And we're gonna set up some time with Budget Finance Committee.
Okay, great. Because that one went so long, I'm sorry, because that one went so long, I wasn't able to go to the Shade Tree Commission.
Thank you, Donna. Tony?
Last week, I attended the Conservation Commission meeting, the manager was there as well. The manager talked to them about the future, combining the Commission with the Inland Wetlands Commission. And one of the commissioners there had some questions on the Wilkes Triangle because he saw the stuff on TV, and just had a few concerns, and the manager went over them with him, so they were happy on that. And as far as the combination of commissions, one of the members here used to live in Rocky Hill and said, Rocky Hill had done that, and it makes sense, so we'll be meeting to look into that shortly. Other thing was, last week, there was a Budget and Finance Committee meeting. The committee was there, a few other town consulars showed up, as well as a few members of the Board of Ed. The manager was there, the finance director, superintendent of schools, the business manager, and one other person from finance. It is when the auditors sat down with us to go over their report of last year's audit that ended June 30th of 2015. And a lot of things had been corrected. They had praise for the new business manager that has recently come in at the Board of Ed, who straightened out and set up procedures to straighten out some of the problems that they had last year, so they won't reoccur again. And they had a lot of praise for the town manager and our finance director for the work they've done. They suggested that both areas need to come up with a set of policies and procedures, which the finance director and business manager were asked to work on together because it would make sense to have one policy for both sides. And they will be looking into that. They also suggested a fraud alert line, which we'll be looking into, and the need for a third party administrator for the fireman's pension fund, of which the manager is currently working on an RFQ to go out on that. The pension actuary was there at the meeting to go over with us her preliminary numbers for the budget, as well as educate new members on how the pension plan is administered and what goes into her calculations for doing what's what. And it was very informative, and she answered some questions for us that needed to be answered. The committee then went into executive session to review the quest for qualifications from town attorneys that had been received, and the number was reduced. And on the 27th, we'll be having interviews with the attorneys that were shortlisted. That was done in the executive session, so I can't go on, you know, what the comments were there, but we will be interviewing on the 27th. And we should have a recommendation for the council at the next council meeting on that.
Thank you, Tony.
We had one thing from that same report, sorry.
Go ahead, Mike.
I just wanted to follow up that, I know the policies and procedures manuals were, said that we needed them, but we also stated that at least a one pager from the Board of Ed on the, just the policies and procedures for payroll that people were concerned about should be done pretty immediate, and I think everybody agreed.
The Rules and Procedures Committee met tonight. We discussed some possible changes, including the implementation of a consensus agenda, abbreviated minutes, and some housekeeping changes. Nothing was decided, and we can look into that further.
And I did attend the Building Committee meeting, I guess it was last Monday. Again, some owners expenditures, change orders were addressed. With regard to the project, the area to the east side, as you drive down from Wocket Hill, those two floors are now, will be occupied for this next semester. The auditorium is still on track, and I think people are crossing their fingers on that, but that's still on track for March. In terms of the furniture and fixtures, where we are on that account, we are still awaiting, I think the next meeting, there will be a report on where we stand on that. It was not ready at the last meeting on Monday, so I'm assuming next meeting that will be available. Again, the project is moving along on schedule generally, and everyone's working hard on the budget side to make sure it comes in under budget as we approach the end of the project. So that's it for the Building Committee.
Can I make one comment?
You can.
I thought it was interesting, the construction manager said, there are portions of the building the sophomores had never seen before when they opened them up after Christmas. I thought that was a really interesting comment. It is true, there are pieces of the building that some of the students that have been there over a year have not even seen yet, and now they're occupying those brand new spaces.
Right.
Pretty exciting.
Yeah, and those are, so folks know, the east side of the building, these are the science, the science classrooms as well, which really, going back to the start of the project, was a significant driver in the project, starting in the first place. The science rooms were in really deplorable condition, classes weren't able to have labs, and we're moving into the phase where the students finally will be able to use more state of the art facilities. So exciting time for the project. Obviously, there's a lot of work with, when you put new space on, there's obviously taking away other space. So again, it's a project that's going on while the building is occupied, so there's a lot of juggling that goes on in terms of the schedule itself and classroom space. But it's getting close, and the students and teachers and administrators have worked hard to make it as seamless as possible.
Council comments? Donna?
Have a couple things. Is there any update on the property at the north end of the Berlin Turnpike, the used, believe it was a used car lot that was okay to go in there? Any news about whether that's going forward or not going forward? That's where the old, that gas station or repair place was.
I think the big hurdle for them is they were required to put a permanent surface down, which was more expensive than they anticipated, so I think they're still evaluating that option.
And then, I had a couple of people ask me about the shopping center and a potential health hazard with rats. So I don't know, maybe the health department can look into that.
Which shopping center?
Weathersfield Shopping Center. Some of the neighbors have been impacted, and you know, it's, I don't know if the health department is aware.
Find out. I have not heard that, but doesn't mean it's not going well.
Any other council comments? Sure. Mike?
Along the lines of Donna's, just, I'd asked this a while back on the Weight Watchers. I know Ashley Furniture has opened up in Newington, and just where the Weight Watchers is, I think the last comments were 30 to 45 days, or be it closing, they start some action, and it's been about that time.
And I don't know the answer to that right now. I don't know, Jeff, if you have any update, but I'm sure by the next meeting, if not sooner, we can get an answer on that.
Any other council comments? Jeff?
I have nothing additional. It is meeting time of year, so everybody's busy with different committee meetings, and we'll try to keep the calendars rolling and the committee meetings posted, so everybody's schedule is tough right now, but we'll keep going. Also, we're looking at, for the budget meeting with the department heads, if you can check your calendars for eight months.
if you can check your calendars for April 23rd. Seems to be post-kid vacation, when a lot of parents go out of town. So we're looking at the 23rd. It's not set in stone, but we'd ask you to kind of look at that and let me know if that's gonna work for you so we can kind of put that on the calendar.
Is that the week after the school vacation?
That's the week after.
Okay.
And that would be after the public hearing on the budget as well.
Dolores?
I have a couple. We will, in Connecticut, our presidential preference primary will be April 26. If you are already in a party, you will be able to vote in that party's primary. If you wanted to change your party, you would have to do it by January 26, or you will not be able to vote in another primary. The other thing is, if you're unaffiliated, you can do it up until noon the day before to join a party, to be able to vote in their primary. That's it.
Thank you. Moving on to council action. B1A, acceptance of resignations from boards and commissions. Tony?
Motion to accept the resignation of Michael Scavetta, 51 Wilmont Street, from the Youth Advisory Board.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Appointments to boards and commissions, B1B. Donna?
For the Design Review Advisory Committee, Andrea Boyle of Walker Hill Road from 11916 to 112019. Stephen Hine of Hangdog Lane of 11916 to 112019. The Redevelopment Agency, Colleen Sheridan, from State Street, from 1116 through 63020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. And I think we have another appointment.
For the Design Review Advisory Committee, Joseph E. Hickie Jr. of 28 Medevue Drive from 11916 to 1119. For the Central Health, Connecticut Health District, Anne Marie DiLoreto, 143 Eastern Drive, from 11916 to 63016. For the Human Rights and Relations Commission, David Zagata of 19 Wildwood Drive, 11916 to 63018. David Zagaya again, for the Youth Advisory Board, 19 Wildwood Drive, from 11916 to 63018. And Julie Lemos for the Tourism Commission, from 21 Clovercrest Road, 11916 to 63019. And also a correction for the MDC Commission. MDC Commissioner Daniel Camilleri Correction. His term is from January 5, 2015, to December 31, 2020. It was originally showing an end date of 2021.
I'll second those.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. There is no unfinished business. Moving on to B3A, Town Council Meeting Dates for 2016. Dolores?
Every year you have to approve the dates that are going to be meeting. They are usually the first and third Mondays of the month. And whenever there is a holiday, like Martin Luther King, yesterday, the date of your meeting is set by charter to be exactly the next day. That happens in a couple of places. The Board of Ed has, we have a meeting on the 21st. The Board of Ed has to present their budget, which they drop off at my office on March 15th, and it gets delivered to your homes. And they will make a presentation at the meeting of March 21st. The public hearing is set by charter, and it's gonna be in the chambers at 7 o'clock. And it's for the budget, and it is April 18th. With your set date is May 15. There are days like in, we have in the past, you, council has chosen to change some dates or cancel a meeting or postpone it if it's around Independence Day or Labor Day, of course, it's just the following Tuesday when we return. And then usually the night before election. This year it would be the 7th, because there is a lot of work that I'm involved with at the election. It's usually canceled. But you have time to do that as we get closer to those dates. So that's, those are the recommended times, meeting times.
Do we have a motion on that?
I'd make a motion to approve the meeting dates for the year 2016.
I second that.
Any comments?
Comment?
Dolores, I think the June 30th 16 date should read June 20th 16? Because the 20th is the third Monday of the month.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion passes. Item 3B.
Motion to authorize the town manager to accept the CASAC grant for prevention programs for the students of Weathersfield for the amount of $5,323.
Second.
Kathy, do you want to talk about that?
Good evening. This grant helps us with our preventive programs in town for the Weathersfield students. We do a couple of things with them. Probably the one you're most familiar with is our after-school programs at the Silas Dean Middle School. That helps to fund some of those programs. We also use it as a, this year we'll be using it to do a survey, working with the school district in some of the grades, in both the middle school and the high school. And we're beginning to get ready to do that, and this grant will help fund that also. So those are some of the key things we'll be doing with the grant.
Any questions? Kathy, is this a grant that's received, has been received in past years?
Yes, we've been fortunate to get this grant. It's been somewhere between $4,800, and this is probably the highest we've gotten, the $5,200, $300. But yes, we've gotten this, and it's pretty much been used for the after-school program at the middle school and some other programs.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained.
Thank you.
Item B4A, truck for the police department?
This is a motion to approve the purchase of a 2015 Ford 150, including trading in the 2010 Ford Ranger.
Second.
Chief, would you like to come up and talk about that?
Yes. We have a number of undercover vehicles, and they're all clunkers. I like to keep one that's in good shape for safety reasons, for the long-distance surveillance types of events. And when we have multiple officers in there with their equipment, the Ranger was just too small. Plus, we use it for a lot of other reasons, too. We use it to pull the trailer for shooting, because we have to shoot in Berlin. We don't have a range here. We have all their equipment in a trailer that we have gotten through a grant, probably 15, 20 years ago. And this truck will be able to pull that trailer where the Ranger wasn't. We also use it to put up the stealth stat. That's the recording device that actually measures speeds on different streets. The officers have to get up high onto the pole to put those up, and the truck will help us with that, too. So there's a number of reasons why we need the truck. We are purchasing it out of asset forfeiture funds. And of course, you know, asset forfeiture funds can't be used for any other reasons other than non-budgeted type items. So that's why we're looking to upgrade the truck that we have now.
Okay. Any council questions?
Just one. Chief, it might be helpful for the new counselors that are here just to tell them a little bit more about the asset forfeiture funding and how you get it, and, you know, the parameters from which they can use it.
Sure. Asset forfeiture funds come from drug dealers. The assets that we seize during drug arrests that we share with either the state government or the federal government, they take their piece out. We were fortunate a couple of years ago to get a substantial amount of money from the federal government in regards to asset forfeiture case that we were involved in. That money cannot be used or can't supplant any budgeted money. Can't use it for something that is in the budget. It can be used for anything that, along the lines of our police work or narcotics work, which this truck will be used for. The problem that we have with the Ranger was that it was just, some of the guys are pretty big, and that inside of that truck was too small for some of the larger officers. I'm fine with it, but not so much them. Asset forfeiture is a godsend. And of course, now the federal government has shut that down. So we gotta look to make sure that we spend the money correctly and do it right. If you have any questions about it, I'd be glad to answer. Anything you don't understand?
Mike?
Thanks, Chief. What is the budget or the status of the asset forfeiture account monetarily? How much money do we have in?
I don't know the exact figure, but I believe it's around, last I knew, it was like around $800,000.
Okay.
We were, we had a big one, another big one coming in, but it got, I'm not sure if it got cut off or not. We, it's kind of like in limbo right now. I was hoping to get that, because there's a lot of other things that we need to purchase, too.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. We appreciate you coming in and explaining that, and also for using the asset forfeiture funds so wisely. Not only this time, but in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion passes. Moving on to the item 6A, meeting minutes of December 21, 2015.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes, but I have a few amendments to make. Let me make them now? Or do you want a second first?
Go ahead.
Second?
Yes.
Okay. I gave the changes to Dolores already, but throughout the document, DeBaco's name, I believe, has a capital B instead of a small b. On page three, the third line down, I believe it should read 20, not 120. On page 17, the fifth line down, Wildwood is two words, and it should be one word. And on page 24, the 12th line down, it lists you as Counselor Barry instead of Deputy Mayor Barry. So those were my changes.
Any other changes to those meeting minutes?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. The next item is the meeting minutes of January 4, 2016.
To make the motion to approve the minutes?
Sir?
Any comments? Seeing no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Public comments? Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Mr. Colantonio?
That's me again, I guess. Good evening. Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue, 2016. It's been like, you know, probably six, seven years now that I've been asking why I cannot get a stop sign on Morrison Avenue in the westbound direction, eastbound direction. As long as I don't get an answer, I'll be asking. Now, the only answer I got is because I don't have enough traffic. But we still have more traffic than Hillcrest. And the other answer I got is there's too many stop signs in Weathersfield. That's why you're not getting one. Well, I guess it's all right, you know? But we have many stop signs that they are not needed. And they're there. Theoretically, if you ask the engineering department, if they're telling you the truth and they know what they're doing, they're gonna tell you that Tifton, approaching Morrison Avenue, needs a stop sign. It doesn't meet the intersectional side distance required for 25 miles per hour. And yet, 85% of the people on that street go 31. So there is something going on right here. People go faster than 25. And there are about 40 kids, a few years ago, there was 40 kids that crossed the street on the most unsafe spot on Morrison Avenue. Again, I brought it up to you guys that in 1955, Morrison Avenue did not, did not connect to Silas Dean. And then the town opened it up and connected. All the deficiency on that street, when you compare it with Hillcrest Avenue, it's amazing, yet Hillcrest Avenue has three stop signs on the intersection, and we have two. And I'm asking why, and how long it's gonna take. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Good evening again. Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. I think Mr. Colantonio has a very good, valid reason for needing a stop sign on his street. It's a narrow street. The yards are, front yards are extremely close to the road. I think it's a town of Weathersfield problem, or engineering problem back whenever that neighborhood was created. And I believe that you need to slow traffic down on those narrow roads. You don't have many of them, but here is one that really needs it. I urge you to vote, to give him a sign to slow traffic down. Next. As I said at the last town council meeting, there's a big hole of debt going on in the entire country, like $18.7 trillion. That's with a T. And that comes out to roughly $58,000-plus per person that we owe in that big debt. State of Connecticut owes another big debt of money that tonight you just took a grant, or you're going after a measly $5,000 grant, that they don't have the money to give you. They've gotta go out and borrow that lousy $5,300. Yet you folks, yeah, let's force them into giving us the $5,300, even though they gotta go borrow it. Does that make any sense? What really makes sense is you people are so quiet with the people in Hartford, because you're part of the problem with them. And it's a shame. You know, we come down here to see you, and you do zip. You encourage more debt at the state level. You encourage more debt at the federal level, because you do the same thing there. And that's why we have an $18.7, $18.8 trillion deficit at the federal level. And that's why we have an 18.7, 18.8 trillion-dollar deficit at the federal level. And look at the stock market, where we're going today, since, actually, since January 1st. It's in the doldrums. You're now seeing how slow things are going to be. Those people with 401Ks are going to be hurting. We're going to see very little increase of interest at the bank for the seniors and for those who have any money in the bank. I mean, we just give the money to the bank. We don't get anything. We're so, so, so little. Yet you spend like there's no tomorrow. And then I read this article, "Council, Town Manager Begin Budgetary Discussions." Right off the bat, you're mentioning, you're mentioning that you have the Metropolitan District Commission and Debt Service that are going up. Well, we all know that. You people, not you new ones, but the old ones here, seniors, let's call them, you encouraged the citizens to vote for the MDC water project, and you knew darn well it was going to go up. Yet here you make that comment, and the press should really be saying that not only is it going up, but these are the same people that voted, would, voted and encouraged people to vote for this water project that's costing all this money. And now we're looking at what? 5.7% increase from the MDC, at least the town is. I'm sure every citizen is going to be looking at that as well, kind of an increase. I mean, you want to see your water go up? You want to see, I mean, we have enough things going up, especially our taxes. And wait till after GE leaves. We're really going to see it. So, you know, I know you're going into this budgetary time span right now that'll go on until May or June, but you need to think and remember those people out there who are not able to pay these kinds of taxes that you've been raising. I mean, we have a lot of empty homes in town. We have, we have an extremely poor real estate market in town. I mean, just go read that Sunday article in the Hartford Current. That sickened what's going on. And then, of course, I get, I get a message from someone who lost a third of his value of his property after living in it for seven years or so. Lost a third. Isn't that terrible? And then the folks bailed them out, you know? I mean, in the case of the West Hartford people. So somebody innocent had to pony up money that they probably didn't have. So, you know, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, when we look at Macy's that's closing a store, we look at Walmart that's going to be closing some of their smaller stores and just keep only their superstores going, that, we're going to lose jobs for people. These things are going to hurt. And this council has never represented those people. It's always up, up, up. We have a Board of Education that has absolutely no concern for the citizens, except for, just keep sending us kids and we'll keep raising, raising, and raising the rates, or the entire budget, and nobody there cares. And the town council does not bring them down, because you're just as bad, and you've been as bad. And, you know, that's why the state's in such trouble, starts right here at the grassroots level. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
We're going to do a budget workshop real quick.
Oh, we are going to adjourn for a short budget workshop as well in the managers' conference room, but we, so we don't officially adjourn right now, correct? Okay.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting to the budget workshop session.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.